withdraw $470,220 from the Capital Reserve Fund for buildings and renovations for projects previously approved by the Board. We had discussed this before. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this for Tim? No? Okay, seeing none, we will... Oh, sorry. Is there anyone online that has any questions for the public hearing?
If you're online and wish to speak, please raise your hand. There is no public comment online.
All right, so then we will close the public hearing. So then I will call the full Board meeting to order at 6:31. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, one nation, thy God, indivisible, just as in heaven. All right, public comment will occur during the public comment portions of the meeting and is done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, please state your name and words so that it can be included in the minutes, and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy BEDH, I think is what it is. There it is. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, sorry, yes, under new business, I'd like to add item H, discussion acknowledgement of a donation of $500. That is time since...
All right, knowledge, donation. All right. That brings us to the student report. Our student report is online tonight, is that correct?
Yep. All right, Veronica, you can unmute yourself and give your student report.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Okay, so to start off with, the council has decided to start a basketball and hockey concession stands, which 20% of the proceeds will go to Stevens, so we can raise some more funds for them, and the other 80% will be saved for next year's spring grants for our school clubs. Next is, we have our Winter Fest next week on the Friday, the 19th. And for people that don't know what Winter Fest is, it's an opportunity during the school day for students to embrace holiday cheer and hang out with their classmates in a safe, like, school environment. Some teachers run, like, arts and crafts, others do physical activity, like pickleball, I think we have this year, and then others do, like, movies for people to just chill and hang out in their rooms. At the end of Winter Fest, we also have a school-wide assembly where we play games, and the seniors in the Shakespeare classes perform lip sync battle. And then last week, we sent out a school-wide Google form asking for input on the New Hampshire School bell-to-bell phone ban for our letter that we are endorsing to Kelly AOT, and we got over 100 responses from the student body. And right now, we are working on filtering through those responses and implementing them into our letter. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Veronica? And we have the bonfire, correct, on Thursday as well?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, sounds good. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to correspondence.
We received a letter regarding concessions of names.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we are onto our consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing and the non-public and the public minutes from the 12th.
I'll make a motion that we approve the public hearing minutes from November 12th, 2025.
Okay, motion by John, second by Tia. Are there any corrections to the agenda for any of those minutes? No? Okay, all right. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the non-public minutes from November 12th, 2025.
Okay, motion by John, second by Tia. Any corrections to those? No? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the public minutes from November 12th, 2025.
I'll second.
All right, motion by John, second by Tia. Any corrections to those?
On the bottom of page one, last, number five, Boys and Girls Club, "about," I think, just a spelling.
"About," yes. All right, anything else? No? All right, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous again.
I'll make a motion that we approve the public minutes for November 22nd, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Tia. Any corrections for those minutes?
On the bottom of page two, the second to last paragraph, there's "funds" that was misspelled. And then in the last paragraph, it should be, "Miss Whelan informed the Board," and then "budget" was missing its "T."
This is on the last paragraph of that page?
Of page two, yeah. And then on the top of page three, we also discussed, the first paragraph on the top of page three, we also discussed it was a goal policy and not an absolute.
The class size policy?
Yeah.
A goal policy and not an absolute. Yes, thank you.
On page six, at the top, I believe it was Ian, not Tom, that stated that conversation.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
That's on the top of page six. And on the bottom of page six, John asked about safety and security. That was all I had.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, so we need a vote on the minutes as amended for November 22nd. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right, so that brings us to nominations, re-nominations, resignations, and retirements.
I'll make a motion that we approve the nominations and resignations in the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. John and Tia, any questions about this? This goes into effect when? Oh, 12/18, so it's our, this next week is when it goes into effect?
Yes.
And it's for the rest of the school year, or?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the nominations and resignations? All right, unanimous, thank you. Okay, that brings us to SAU leadership.
Good evening. Tonight, we are talking about fiscal '27 budget update. You've received a letter, which I'm just going to briefly go over, and our proposed budget reduction scenarios. On November 22nd, the SAU presented the first draft of our fiscal year '27 budget of $58,633,737. This budget reflected a $3,896 and $312 increase, which is approximately 7.11%. At that meeting, you had directed the staff to prepare scenarios reflecting a 7%, a 5%, 4%, and 2% increase to our fiscal year '26 operating budget, and indicate the impact to student learning and operations for each scenario. For the community's reference, the reference targets associated with each scenario, to get to the 7% budget reduction, we would have to reduce our budget by $62,593. 5% to reduce by $1,157,941. $4 million, $1,705, $705, $1615. And 2% would have been $2,800,963.
Sorry, can I interrupt? I just realized that we did public hearing for, I mean, we did public comment for the public hearing, and I didn't do public comment for the meeting, didn't open it up to public comment for the meeting.
Okay, so we'll pause.
So can we, can we pause briefly? I'm so sorry. So, we need to have public comment. We'll have two sessions, one at the beginning, one at the end. Can we, is there any public comment in the room? Seeing none. Is there any public comment online?
If you are online and would like to speak for public comment, please raise your hand. There is no public comment online.
And so we'll reopen at the end of the meeting as well. I'm sorry, continue.
Thank you. I just wanted to put into some context about state funding and rising fixed costs. For the '26-'27 school year, the state has provided adequacy aid of $4,351 per student, which was a total of $5,761,681 for SAU '88. We are guaranteed 90%, no, sorry, 95% of this allotment, as stated in our budget proposal. The New Hampshire Supreme Court ruled in July that this base rate should be at least $7,356 per student as the date of the decision with not being adjusted for inflation. This would total $9,740,975.56 for SAU '88, an increase of $3,979,294.56. For everyone's perspective, our initial proposed budget is up $3,896,312. If the state funded our adequacy aid accorded to the New Hampshire Supreme Court ruling, the proposed budget increase would be fully covered by the state funding, and thus, there would be no increase to our local education tax rate. I think it's really important as we move forward and frame that discussion. Also, as many as you know, we are facing historically high increases in mandatory cost areas such as healthcare premiums. This year, we are facing a 19.6% increase to our healthcare premiums. So, our district has already started the work and remains fully committed to pursuing all available options to reduce healthcare costs and to explore cost containment strategies wherever possible. How did we get to these reduction scenarios? Our SAU team met with our building leaders and department heads to identify possible reductions. Our approach prioritized reviewing account lines, line by line. We went through every single line in the budget books, ranking possible areas for reduction in order of importance. If we could determine, determine we could have alternate funding for these items, such as grants, federal funds, or revolving accounts, we outlined that in the scenarios. We tried to identify cuts that would not impact students wherever possible, and clearly outlining in lower percentage targets where reductions would be, begin to affect student learning and class sizes, course programming, district operation, compliance timelines in deferred maintenance, and long-term facility needs. So, when we were going through this, we ended up doing the budget scenarios at 7%, we got to 4.9%, 4.37%, and 1.92%. I know you folks have had an opportunity to go over these from the last week. I was wondering if you wanted me to go through each item, or would you like to open up the discussion here with yourselves and ask questions?
This is sort of up to the will of Board. What do you all think? Do you want to ask questions? Do you need to go through each of these items, or are there just, I think it'd probably be more specific, more useful for us to talk about specific questions, because I think some things are understandable?
I'm happy to jump into discussion.
Okay.
I just want to start with that $62,000. We were able to finally get our negotiated rate from our Hartford area Career and Technical Center, which we were really excited to be able to get that, to be able to reflect in the budget. I just want to let everyone know, this is based on 70 students attending Hartford Career and Technical Center.
Okay, all right, so then let's, let's ask questions first, if we have questions about particular items in the proposals, or about the proposals generally, and then we can talk about the proposals as a whole, I guess. So, questions?
Jump right in.
So, I just want to say, before we do that, I appreciate, I want to thank the administration, SAU administration, and building administrators for doing this. I think this is really helpful. I know that it was a lot of work to do in a short amount of time, which we appreciate, because it does make it so much easier for us to look at what we're actually talking about here. And I appreciate that things are prioritized, which I think is really helpful as well. So, thank you all for that, everyone. So, who wants to start?
I'm happy to jump in a bit. Just for any folks at home viewing, this is available online. Amy's been doing a great job being transparent. Thank you again to all the administrators. This was quite a load to pull. And if I could just kind of generally, so 7% was the initial proposed budget, and then to see what the, what the cuts are at 5%, and then at 4%, it seems that if we were to cut things down there, that's losing so many basic maintenance things that really help take care of our district and keep the district and our buildings that we are stewards of kind of financially well, as well as affecting summer school. So, I don't love that. And then, of course, in red for our color printouts, to have the 2% reduction does mean positions. I personally do not favor that either.
It actually, just clarification, it would mean reduction in force, so we would have to pink slip existing staff.
Right.
Actually, if I could, just going through that, just on summer school, and I know Karen's here that can jump in to support me here. Our summer school program is currently under a multi-year review to look at our costs and ensure its effectiveness. The review has highlighted the need to formally separate our general education program from our special education extended year, extended school year services. This is really important for us to be able to determine costs of each program. Specifically, for students in grade 1 to 5, we see this as a key opportunity to boost our offerings for Title I students, as these students have the greatest need in foundational skills. But we must ensure that any Title I funds are not used to directly supplant our current core program. In this proposed scenario, students would be offered individualized tutoring. That might be a better fit for some families' summer plans and boost student participation, as well as offering individualized support to maximize impact. Regarding our high school program, we have identified potential administrative and para-educator savings that would still allow us to deliver our adequate credit recovery opportunities to our high school students. Finally, we had the most difficulty with the, for the middle school students. These students have probably have been the most impacted through COVID, and as we've reviewed our data impact, their scenario would be a part of a larger restructuring effort to create a program that may be better suited to be, to meet their busy summer schedules, such as fitting around existing day camps. We do believe if we did cut the middle school program, this would have a bigger overall overimpact on the student experience, as the time and intensity of academic support would be reduced. So, just for that information in there. And before, more feedback to, Tim and I have been discussing, and although it's in the 4.3%, we do believe we need more time to look into the transportation software. I think it would be premature for us to have this in the budget this year and to, to move it forward, because there's some aspects of students having cards to tap on and tap off that we need to look into further. So, I apologize for that interruption.
I did have a question, Amy. In the 4.94% proposal, we have a few Valley News items on here, and I know that communication is part of the strategic plan overall. Is there hope that taking these out will still be fine with communication? These are also particularly drops in the budget number-wise. I'm just curious.
Absolutely. You know, working with Jack Rooney, we were talking about the Valley News spotlight, and this could be an area of reduction that wouldn't directly impact, obviously, student learning. So, we wanted to prioritize that up, and then rather than put it lower, even though it has a very small number. But what our, our plan would be to continue the use of social media, district website, and newsletters for that. The other piece would be the advertising for job openings. Through our HR department, we find that most people are finding our jobs through listserv, social media, Edjobs, NH, or word-of-mouth. But we would need to do an MOU for existing CBAs, some of that language in there that says that we advertise in the Valley News, would have to just have an MOU, which I think...
Can you tell me what an MOU is?
It would be a memorandum of understanding. So, we're not opening up the contract, but just saying we're going to advertise in a different manner. And finally, the annual report and printing, as we get ready to now start build our annual report for next year. This is actually a goal in the strategic plan, is to reformat that. I think there's continuation of conversation, does it need to be printed in its extent and mailed out to everyone, where lots of other districts do print and then have it available, which is by our say you need to have. But with our new communications director, he feels that he would be able to design the annual report rather than subcontracting that out that it had done in the past. Again, a very small amount, but we wanted to make sure it was up in that area before, you know, we touch staff and student learning.
Yeah, I trust your expertise and the way you've all have gone through it, but I would be curious to hear next year, if we think the community is still as engaged, or how much that might have been an impact or not an impact. Thank you.
Oh, you can hear me. So, one of the things I wanted to talk about was the summer school. So, I'm glad that you brought that up. And what I'm understanding is that staff is confident that the summer school will continue to be, that the quality will remain the same or better?
Sure. Karen, do you want to come up and just talk about a little bit of our review process, that we've been talking about this for several years? And with the combined program, it's really difficult to measure efficacy, and most ESY services are separate from there. So, welcome, Karen, and if you can add in anything from there.
Look at me. Hi, I'm Karen Dubois, Director of Academics. So, I just, if someone could just restate the question at hand, or do you want me to provide an overview of?
I just want to make clear to anybody listening in that the budget cuts to the summer program will not be a disadvantage to children who need to...
I'm sorry, I'm not able to hear you, Tia.
Oh, my goodness. Is this mic better?
That's better, thanks.
I'm switching mics then. My question is more about clarifying for the people listening, if there's cuts, cuts to the summer programming, that we are confident that the student needs will continue to be met at the same level or better, or what is that accurate? What does that look like?
Sure. So, I think the summer program, as it currently exists, for our rising K-2, rising eight students, is really a combined program, in which students who are part of our special education services and receive extended year services, get those services in the context of a general education program. So, for three weeks in the summer, students come to campus five days a week for the morning only. And if they are receiving special education services, they leave the general ed cohort for those services for, let's say, 45 minutes, and then are returned to the co-op cohort. And alongside them, there are groups of their peers who have demonstrated academic need, but may not be special education students. They don't have required extended year services. To be clear, our extended year services would continue. Ben Nestor is prepared to continue those services as they're legally required. We think it would be optimal, for lots of reasons, to offer a more flexible program in the general ed setting. And again, we'd like to beef up our utility of Title I funds for a different program, but that would create overlap with this program. As Amy said, we've been, together with Tim, looking at the costs of the summer programming, which in aggregate altogether is very costly. On a per pupil basis, it's one of the most costly programs that we currently run. So, we are, regardless of this budget decision, going to separate the special education services from our general education services. We will, these cuts represent only the general education services, if that answers your question. As, as Amy was outlining, from our point of view, leveraging Title I funding, as we plan to do, will provide a really robust, potentially more robust, level of service on a tutoring, through a tutoring program, for those students who are at the greatest level of academic need in grades 1 through 5. So, we think that would not have the biggest impact. The summer school budget cuts, again, are primarily administrative and para-educator support, so that program would be minimally impacted. The program that would see the greatest impact is the middle school program. So, that would represent a reduction in student contact time with academic support services. So, of the three programs you see outlined here, the one that stands to have the greatest impact on student experience is the middle school program.
And I see that no transportation is going to be provided for summer school. Has that been consistent every year, or is that something we're cutting this year for cost?
Transportation is provided for our K-8 students for that three-week program.
Okay.
In any cut scenario, transportation would be an open question. If we're bringing to students to campus only for an hour of tutoring, it's not possible to transport them, because they're not all arriving and departing at the same time, and the entire, the value proposition of that tutoring program is in part to be flexible around existing family schedules. So, for example, a tutor might be able to meet with a student from 8 to 9, if they have a day camp experience that begins at 9:00 AM, or at the end of the day, from 3:30 to 4:30, to allow that flexibility, providing group transportation simply isn't feasible. Again, if transportation would still be provided, we anticipate for our special education students, who are guaranteed their ESY services.
Right.
Thank you, Karen. I was just going to say, if it's in the IEP, we're provided.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was some equity. I figured there was some thought to equity, to bring that up. All right, that's all I had. If anybody else has questions for Karen.
I, so, Richard Ford Burley was not able to be here tonight, and he sent me an email that he would like me to read, just of his preliminary thoughts. So, first, I'd like to extend, this is him, "My gratitude to the superintendent, business administrator, and the teams from all the schools in the SAU for their hard work on identifying potential areas for budget reductions. We all appreciate the financial challenges the district is facing this year, and the work presented in these reduction numbers speaks highly of the district's commitment to managing taxpayer resources efficiently while prioritizing care for our students. I would like to voice my support for the presented budget plan that reduces the increase from 7.11% to 4.94%. With the present inflation situation, including a 19.6% increase in healthcare insurance costs to the district, this feels like a reasonable series of compromises to deal with an exceptional situation. It would be remiss not to point out that even with all these reductions, this increase is in excess of the 3% CPI number for inflation. This is because CPI is designed to be a countrywide average increase in cost for a household, and is not an accurate measure of the way inflation costs affect the Lebanon School District. I urge my fellow board members to vote in support of the 4.94% increase for the '26-'27 budget year." Thank you." And he did also say, if the question comes up, and this is because we already just brought it up, he's in favor of spending on the transportation software, so long as the final expenditure is okayed by the budget, by the Board after a presentation by the company, creating a solution for us. So, but we just talked about why that wouldn't, it's too soon for that.
So, that's from Richard.
Additional questions?
I did have one more question about the maintenance vehicle. Rather than replacing an older van, we would provide maintenance and upkeep. I just, is this decision being made with the vehicle being safe for the people? Is it breaking down a lot? Do we have any concerns, or is it just?
Good question. It's on, it's, all of our non-new vehicles are 10, 12 years old, so it is not breaking down a heck of a lot. This, the number that was in the budget was $65,000, so we kept $5,000 for repairs. It's really an attempt to replace things before they become troublesome and dangerous. But if it has to wait here.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one more question. If we select the 4.94% plan, which is currently most attractive to me, to be candid, I know there has been talk...
I know there has been talk about some grants and matching funds for the Hanover Street School structure. So there's, there's some creative problem solving and hope there. But I am curious what might be the case for the Mount Leb School District's library, Mount Leb Schools' library renovation to make that accessible? What might be that? Because I see it as yes for potential alternate funding.
So we have that in, that is in the four point nine, four point nine four, thank you. This project is not necessary for next year and it could move to another year in the capital improvement plan. So there, currently we'd have to look for different options or end of year funds. But I know Katie Roach is here, the principal. If, once you start running, you have to make it ADA compliant, right Tim? And right now for next year, we do not have a student where we would need to do that as the immediate. This board may decide that they just want to do that at some point, but it's not an immediate issue. Tim, am I missing anything with the ADA?
No, no, as far as additional funding, I mean, we don't have anything necessarily in mind, but there are, there are life safety grants that come up out of the Department of Safety periodically. In fact, there's one that's open right now that we're trying to get some door locks with. So that's the idea. It's like maybe, maybe you're unfunded as far as like a grant, there's not like, hey, there's a title grant that'll pay for that, like some of these other ones. But it has, and it has been in CIP since I've been here. We have been.
I'm sorry, Tim, is that a decade?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my concern, that it feels like this particular project, you know, there, there seems to be some hope for some momentum for the play structure at Hanover Street School. But the, the library being inaccessible and continuously saying this isn't an issue yet. Whenever I can look at, if I'm just comparing really quickly, the, the library, we're, we're budgeting eighty five thousand dollars there, but the transportation software that has now been nixed is about seventy five thousand. I wonder if we can maybe even do something to particularly protect the, the library renovation from getting ignored.
I want to be clear for the public that any, anyone who has needed, who's had ADA issues, who has needed to access the library in Mount Leb has been able to access all the materials PRC is needed to use by Katie, maybe moving, moving things around or, I mean, she can talk more to that, but there's, there's no, there's not a part of the library sort of subjects, well, sorry, you can't get that because you can't get down there. Just want to be clear on that. It's just a matter of, there's a couple of steps and we have to be judicious and we haven't had to modify it because we haven't modified the library. So by law, if you don't do anything to it, you're okay until you do. So that's the history behind it, just to be clear.
Real quick, I was just noting again, small dollar amount, but noting in one of the plans, there's a fifteen thousand dollar maintenance on a three bay garage where we would just do that in-house. Is there any downside to just doing that in-house regardless?
That, that was something that we worked out with John Kerber and I, you know, their guys are ready to do that, so he was like, we can, we can do this maintenance.
Perfect, we remove it to the library.
You know, when you open up new school buildings, you find things, so I'm just, yeah, for the maintenance building.
So, yeah, I think. Going to speak, we'll see what happens. Maybe someone needs to be on.
Well, turn on anyway, just, just continue to talk.
Okay. I think that I am incredibly grateful to the administration and the administrators and the superintendent for putting together these scenarios. I think the clarity of the communication is excellent. I think that the way that it's presented is great, so I'm really grateful. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you guys very much. I think that, you know, I never like to go line by line in a budget and say like, these are the things I support, these are the things I don't. Like I don't like to do that. I think it's much better that we say, here's what, we trust you guys, we'd like you to prioritize appropriately. So I, that's the one piece of this that I don't really love is us kind of going through here and saying like, well, I, you know, the Valley News, maybe not so much, well, this may, like, I don't love that. However, since that's the conversation we're having, I think that the, I guess, the truth is my inclination is, is probably actually not to nix everything in the four point nine four percent reduction, increase. There are a few things in there that I think are important to be preserved. There are things in the other items that the further down budgets that I think we were already saying may be able to be removed or changed. So again, the transportation software, the possibility of some of the maintenance being done in-house, I think those are great options. So the, the sort of two that are coming to mind for me are the library renovations concern me that we do, they have, they come up every year, they get put off every year. I get really unclear on whether that means it's actually needed or whether it's not. I think that when we went through the CIP process and we really looked at all the items and we looked at this item, we felt that this was something that still needed, needs to be fixed. This is something that we've put off for a long time. It's not ADA compliant. They have, the team has absolutely done everything that they can and done a great job of continuing to make things accessible. That doesn't change the fact that longer term, we really should be addressing this and we haven't been. So I think that that's one thing that I, I struggle with sort of saying, oh, another year. That's what we say all the time. When does that other year come? So that's one that I, I think that the number of students who need it right now is not, is zero, as we're, we're indicating. So I think there is some reason to say like, okay, maybe it really is next year. I can understand that argument in that place, but I would call out especially to the newer members, that's something that we want to keep our eye on or we shouldn't be looking at it every year. I think that the, the play structure at Hanover Street School concerns me as an item to be cut because I think that when you look at the number of dollars that we're talking about and the number of students and the number of minutes that they spend engaging with this stuff, those are some of the highest use items in the entire district. And if you've seen this structure, it is old, it is rusted, it is not in good shape. We are actually looking at items that do need to be, what is, it's the slide, I think, Tim? I forget every time we talk about this, like, there's like elements that need to be replaced on it that you can't just replace that one part. It doesn't make any sense to replace that one piece because of the way the structure is put together. So this is a little, like, to me, I get that it's a big number. At the same time, when you think about how many students touch that structure every single day, five days a week, it's not very much money. And I think that it's, it's time. And I'm concerned about us just sort of saying next year, next year, next year, because it's expensive, it's in a capital, and it's a capital change. It's a physical change instead of something else. So I don't really, I'm not really in favor of saying, I want you to do this. I guess what I would probably do is say, I'm okay with, I'd probably pick a number that's right around the five percent budget number and propose that. I think that's what we did last year in the old, in the final round of budgets, we did pick a number. We don't have to approve the exact numbers here. We can say, we can pick a different one. And so I think that that to me, like, I'm sort of, I am kind of mentally looking through this list and saying, okay, we've talked about these, where did all those numbers kind of net out? I would argue for some of the, the expensive things. I would argue for cuts in other areas. I think the rooftop classroom isn't ready. Like, we're not ready to spend that money. I still think it's a project I'm excited about. I think it could be a great resource for the district. We're not there yet. And it's not a good year for it. So I would say there's two hundred and twenty out. The new position at Hanover Street School, it does sound to me like we are going to be within, we're going to be within real close to our goals in terms of district class size. So new people, really expensive. I think that that's another area where I feel like we can probably do without it. The, like, having people leave through attrition and finding new ways to distribute those resources, the pair reduction. Those are big meaty amounts of money. Those mean something. So I think those are well thought out. They seem to be thoughtful. But then there are some others that I, I don't love as much. So I'd probably be, be in support of a number right around that five percent, maybe a smidge higher. But I think again, when you see the other items that I think we're already discussing may be able to be pulled out, maybe it is the five percent number.
I just want to add, because it's not on here, so the, as far as the play structure goes at Hanover Street, so there is a, they have gotten a grant for fifty thousand dollars for, as a matching grant. And Richard, who's not here, is in the process of writing letters to local businesses to match that grant. In addition, there are additional grant funds. We were just talking the other night with the district PTOs. There are additional grant funds for special needs play structures, for play structure renovations, for playground renovations, et cetera. So they were interested in sort of looking into those possibilities as well. And another, and one of the other things they talked about is that that particular cost, the hundred and fifty, the Hanover Street PTOs and the Mount Leb PTOs too, were wanting to know, like, there were other options. They wanted to know what the other options were as far as replacing that structure because there were also less costly options than the hundred and fifty, which would be more feasible given the grant funds and the matching funds. So there's some other funding possibilities for those, for that particular thing that are in the works right now, just as a FYI. You were going to say something, I'm sorry.
I think you said everything.
Can, can I ask how long, just because we have the comparison of, of how long something has been part of the plan and if it's delayed maintenance? Is I think what I don't want to be removed by a sensible and sensitive to our constituencies tax needs plan. How long has the play structure been a hopeful change, I guess, or on the, the agenda, docket, however you want to describe it?
Very short time. So we went to replace the slide and the playground vendor said putting a thirty thousand dollar slide on a thirty five year old play structure doesn't make a lot of sense. So that, that bubbled up honestly in the last year. So it wasn't in CIP, not because it's not important, but I just think that there's a bunch of adults that are not recognizing that this play structure is thirty five years old. So it's probably, it's been needed probably for a long time, but it wasn't identified until in the last twelve months, since John's been here.
Yeah, I think to just put a smidge more nuance onto that, I think.
It's the second time you said smidge.
A smidge. I'm trying to be diplomatic. It's my effort.
Just because you say it doesn't mean it's in a smidge, so.
Well, don't take away all of my diplomacy tools, please. I need every one of them. I think that the CIP went through, has gone through a major process in the last twelve months. That led us to include things that have been discussed in other realms and just weren't included in a document that was previously really only looking specifically at facilities. I think that talking to the PTO, this is actually something they had, that the, the slide had actually been talked about, I think like, like five or 10 years ago. I think that's actually been on a need, a known need for a long time. And it's only recently that we've kind of had those pieces put together. And so I think that the need has been known for a long time. The age of the structure has been known all along. And it's just that we now have a mechanism for making sure that there's visibility into all of those things because as we say, it's not often that a lot of adults are wandering around on the play structure. So I think that this has been around for a long time.
With that in mind, you know, just so anybody knows where I'm kind of sitting, I am happy with the four point nine four percent. I'm also happy with the four point nine four percent plan with the exception of we find a way to do the library renovations for sure. And I am amenable to what we might land on as a board for the play structure, just full disclosure. My child and other children will also go to Hanover Street, so I recognize I am personally vested interest in a nice play structure. But I can hear if it needs to wait or if we're ready.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, Leila, I think your question was a good one, and I think you asked, and I don't think it was answered, was, you know, in general, are there CIP projects that have been passed over? Do we have that information? And of what are those projects, how often, et cetera?
Can I, may I speak to that?
If you have the answer, I guess.
I do, I do.
Do you? Okay.
Do. So we have actually, well, and Tim, you may have the documents in front of you, I don't. We have actually worked to start incorporating a mechanism into the CIP that does track how many times we defer decisions on CIP items. So that's new. So we don't, we, we sort of anecdotally can answer those questions about different things. But we are, we have sort of stated in the CIP process that that's a thing that we're going to start doing, where it's going to say like, we brought it up in this year, it was pushed off to the next year and et cetera. So that's something we will have going forward. I think that anecdotally, we can give information on those things at this point, but we have not historically been tracking how long something stays around. It's more a question of like, when, you know, the FNF meetings last year, we had two members who had been on the board for a long time. And so they had very intimate knowledge of that. Tim also has very intimate knowledge of those things, so we sort of turned to them, but that is something we're going to track going forward.
And I think it's important to understand too, that it was tracked before. The previous director of facilities did track things like that personally, like, but we've had a lot of turnover administratively in this district. And so as far as like long-term in the SAU staff, there's Tim and there's Tim. So, so it, and, and as far as the board goes, I mean, there's John to a certain extent because he has, he's been here in a different role. But there is, so some of that was sort of with that director, although all those records are still there, but John is now in a different position now with a different CIP. So there's, yeah, those, that information exists, but do, is it ready at hand at this moment? No. Will it be going forward? Yes.
And, and just to be kind of clear for anybody who's tuning in with curiosity of, you know, what might be the reasoning, my personal reasoning for how we're doing things, or how I am voting for things, I suppose. Just kind of what Jessica said at our, I think it was our previous meeting, when you were kind of framing, this is an appropriate percentage to spend on caring for our facilities. So I do think that I'm kind of coming into that in mind where that's a particular reason why I don't want the library to continuously be passed over and then just kind of think of that.
Let's, uh, did you want to say something? Okay, go ahead.
I just have one other question, Tim. Are capital reserve funds? Just curious to know if we actually have targets for those funds and what those targets are.
We do not have targets like written down by board. We could do that. In my mind, I, the target I have soft in my head is a million dollars in the building fund, one and a half in the special ed fund. The other two, I don't really think too much about. We haven't, but to the building fund, we'll have one point four after we take the money out that you did the public hearing on tonight. And that was down, when I did Mount Leb, that was down to about two hundred thousand dollars. So it's, you've done a good job growing it. But we don't have a, I don't know, this is a question for FNF in the future. I don't really know what the right answer is, but I think it's a good idea to think about a target. The challenge with that is it, we know what we want to spend out of it, but it, the challenge is how do you make the money go back into it? So that's the difficulty with setting a target that is, is more than just a guideline, which maybe that's enough. But there's difficulty there because you can't make people put money into it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, like, for as long as I've been working on this, we've thought about it, like, it's, it's good to have about a million dollars in there. To me, as a percentage of the assets that the district has under its control, that's a understandable amount. I think that it's a relevant amount. So to me, that number is related to how much space you're looking after and how, what the costs are that are generally associated with looking after that space. So when you have sixty million dollars worth of buildings and facilities that you're taking care of, having ten thousand dollars in a fund doesn't really make much of a difference. You need actual money, so, because you're going to have to spend actual money. Most costs that are coming out of there are things that cost a hundred thousand dollars. Most costs that are coming out of there are things that cost $100,000, $200,000, $300,000. So it's not, and you have one or two or three of those hit in a couple of years, that's your million dollars. So in my head, that's sort of the shorthand I use, is that this is for big costs and you want to, you have, how many, we've got four, five, depending on how you count it, we've got a bunch of buildings, a couple of major costs of those in one or two years, that's your million dollars. So that's how I think about it. We don't have anything formal.
Can I ask the, did you want to say something to that? Sorry.
Yeah, I just, about the facilities, both Tim and I had spent some time with John with this list and kind of talking about every specific item and what he felt is prioritized. So this really reflects from our facilities department that felt that this is the stuff in the 4.94 and going down to some into the 4.37 area were things that could wait until the next year, knowing that we want to put together a budget that protects our assets, it reduces liability, centers on student learning, but also keeps the taxpayers in mind, and especially during a really tough budget year for the city of Lebanon. So we did spend a lot of time with John, Tim and I, just kind of talking through that, and Tyler too, and when, he was great too, just talking about, you know, technology. And you'll see an item on there, IT access points, and it's not ready to fail. And we have a fund for IT stuff that does fail. So we can either fund it now, or if it fails, we could fund it through one of our reserve funds. So there's been a lot of nuanced conversations and a lot of time going into these pieces, and including the conversations with the building principals that went through even just their items and said, hey, I think, you know, we don't need this, and, you know, this is not going to affect students.
I was just going to ask, the board members that we haven't heard from, is there anything that you want to ask? You don't have to, but I want to give you a chance to speak.
I have the, I have the problem. Yeah.
Do we have microphones in our budget? Let's defer maintenance on those. I think we, I think those were in the budget for last year, but they got cut.
I guess I just need a little context about the donation that we make to the charter school. What happens to the charter school if we don't make a donation? What, I need, I just need a little history.
So this relationship with Ledgerd, I believe over more than a decade. And when it was developed, the charter school, Tim, I know you're leaving, but maybe Ian will help me fill in the minor details of how this happened. We really wanted to kind of support this charter school because it meets the needs of students that are not successful in the public school. So this is a, kind of a nuanced relationship that does not typically happen. Some people that send to charter schools pay tuition, some do not. So in our budget this year, we had $100,000. And so when we were looking at that reduction and looking at the basic needs of the district, we thought we could make that reduction of $30,000, because they, as said in this list, they also get money from the state for being a charter school. As we get a new charter school opening up in our town, we have to be careful because we don't want to continue severing revenue to charter schools. I would not want to pull their whole tuition at one time, because it would certainly be detrimental to that charter school. But I did, I have reached out to the director and let her know that this would be consideration as we're tough, facing a tough budget.
Yeah, so when the charter school started, or shortly after that, they, you get the adequacy aid from the state, 4,000 a student, whatever it is, and they reached out to all the schools in the area who send kids there and said that essentially, Ian can correct me, but we need, we don't get enough money from the state to operate. We can, we can kind of understand that. So schools either decided or not, boards decided or not, if they were going to willingly pay for some, from some children, this board decided $4,000 a student, up to 25 students, that's where $100,000 came from, and that's been flat funded since that decision, which is probably 16 or 17. But there's no obligation to do so, so that's where we think we can reduce.
How many kids from our, that would have, that would have been in our district go to the charter school? Maybe you don't know that.
I actually think Ian knows, he spoke with them, because we were looking at numbers today, so. I want to use the chair, Ian, does that mic work?
Hit the button. There you go.
We have had as many as between 20 and 25 students there. We, we used to have regular conversations with the principal there about kids going there because it would be a better fit for them. Right now, we have, in the last few years, I don't think we've had over 16 or 17. Currently, we have 13 high school students there and one middle school student, and five of them are seniors. And, you know, for better or for worse, we have much less contact with the charter school than we did five years ago.
And one other piece too, just so the board are aware, if a Lebanon student attends Ledgerd, but also wants to go to Hartford, we also have to pay that Hartford tuition. So we would be also...
And so right now, we have one Hartford student at the charter school.
Thank you. Kevin?
Sorry to jump on this again, but just going back to the MLS library thing, real quick. We may not have to do it this year, but we'll have to do it eventually, and probably next year is the cheapest it'll ever be, right? So it seems fiscally responsible to actually like have that in the budget. The other thing here, just noting again, another item, the technology equipment, 40,000 reduction of the 4.37 plan, I guess another thing of, why wouldn't we do that regardless, right? It just seems like, I don't know, it reduces options, so maybe that's not palatable, but it just seems like a reasonable cost savings we can implement. So now you have $55,000 towards the library, maybe, something like that.
I just keep adding towards the library.
The, the only thing I had was, the, does the 150,000 for the play structure, does the $50,000 have any effect on that number there? Meaning if we lose it, does it go up to 200,000 or anything? Okay. The other thing, I think just, I feel like it's been said a bunch of times, but the MLS library renovation, the access and accessibility being two different things, the, the only reason we don't have to do it is because we, it's not that it's compliant, it's that it's, we're not doing it. And so that's why we don't have to do it, is because we just keep putting it off and putting it off. But to Kevin's point, a lot of these things that we defer, they're just going to be more expensive next year. And so just, I think pushing off maintenance helps us this year and then comes back to bite us over time. And so I guess overall, as, as much as we can figuring out what are the things that we are vital to do, like the library renovation? Because I also know the kids at Mount Leb, that's where my kid goes, and I also, I do know that there are kids who use accessibility measures to navigate the world. And so they may be able to use the library, that doesn't mean that it's really accessible to them. And so I think that is a very important project to take on.
Ms. Roach, do you want to come up? I know you've been a part of these conversations.
Oh, I'm on. Great, it's working. Hi, I'm Katie Roach. Yes, the Library of Innovation, we did a study last, this year to see what we needed. And we've been talking about it for a few years, and it's, it is, what we have done with the books and moved things around, we have a very beautiful library, as everyone knows, is we've needed to sometimes move just different books around to make them more accessible to different students. And what needs to be fixed in the library, if the board decides to do it, are, there are three very small stairs, they're not very tall, but you cannot get a wheelchair up and down them. We've looked at different ramps and different ways to make them more accessible, and it hasn't really worked. So we did do a study and had some people, some architects come out to give us a design. I guess, is your question like, do I have to have it? Or do, what is the question? You want me to just describe what we need?
Yeah, I just wanted to, from your perspective, and understand why you're part of kind of the decision one priorities and...
Yeah, I, I felt that we could hold off on that. I mean, you're right, we never know who's going to move into our school, but we have been a very, we are very fluid in how we arrange equipment and library materials at our school, and really in any classroom we've needed to do. So I'm pretty confident, if we didn't do it, we could move things around so that the books, every book would be accessible to every single one if we, we just changed the design of how we flow the library, you know? And we've talked about that, like, what are some other things we could do besides fixing those three steps? And/or, and part of the plan is to put, like, for those of you that have been there, like, a railing on a different area, we could always put, I mean, there's things we can do, we do them all the time. And the small bathrooms that we have, and we've made them accessible to people, and we've figured out what to do. So it's just, if we were going to do a renovation, that would have been, I would have liked, that would be the one big area left, a big space of our school left to renovate.
I, thank you, that's very helpful. I guess I'm just, I'm appreciative of all the creative solutions, but it's almost, if I can make an anecdotal reference, it's like my mom waiting 20 years to renovate the kitchen she uses constantly. Like, there's a certain amount of it that if the renovate, after it was completed, it just made everything simpler and better, just to use a personal...
That's very true.
Kind of story. So if that is the case, and I feel like there's been a lot of patience and graciousness and creativity out in Mount Leb, I think it's okay if the board just takes it on, is where I kind of am sitting.
I, I think that, yeah, I never want to detract or give even a whiff of detracting from valuing the creativity, the brutality, the, everything else of our administrators and our facilities people, like, yay, please keep being amazing in those ways, it's wonderful. And sometimes the community gets to say, actually, this is important to us, and we care about it, and we would like to do this. And I think that I find it difficult, frankly, when, to, to have things like paving the little part of the, you know, driveway area that's hard pack over, like, that we, we look at that and we say, yes, we definitely want to do that, but we're not going to fix the library. I don't love that. I think as a community, this is not a reflection on our facilities team or our, the team at Mount Lebanon School, it's none of that. This, to me, is, these are community resources. And I feel more strongly about making sure that our library is, is well, nicely accessible to all. That's really important to me. And I think that I would love for that project to be brought forward. I think that it's only going to get more expensive in the future, and I think it's a really important one. And I think that everybody's done a great job of looking at, at things that can be moved around. And again, I'm not proposing that we, and again, I think for, for some of the new board members, I am not proposing that we say to the, the administrators, we're passing exactly these items. That's not what, let me, let me finish.
Go ahead.
So I'm not saying that. I am saying, this is a very important conversation for us and for our administrators to hear, to say, these are the things that are important to us, we'd really like you to take this into consideration when you think about where the money is going to go to. So I really appreciate the conversations, I appreciate all of the input and all of the creativity that's gone in over the years.
So what I was just going to say was, we are, I think we've, we've, we've heard almost everybody's opinion about the library now. So we're at the point where we're going to, I think they have, the administration now is clear on what it is that we think about this. But going back to Jessica's last point, we are not necessarily at any point approving a budget that says, this, 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 and this gets cut. We're saying, whatever our percentage is, this is the, these are the cuts they're proposing to get to this percentage. But then the, they have the jurisdiction to make those changes. We are at a point though, that discussion, further discussion, unless we have any other additional questions, is not going to be that useful until we have a motion of some kind, which I would recommend be a percentage, but...
Lil, are you guys done with me? Can I go?
Yes, sorry, Katie, thank you. We're not done with you, but thank you for, thank you for your time. Does anyone want to make a motion? Does anyone not want to make a motion? That's everybody.
Everybody's looking at me. You know, I'll just say that, you know, the administration put in a lot of work here, and I, I hope the public has kind of looked at this list to see kind of where the impact really begins for kids. You know, and, and I would also say, you know, despite boards in the past, you know, passing on CIP projects and things like that, I think our district has done very well. It continues to do very well, maintaining our buildings and making sure that our kids have what they need and so forth and so on. I'm really comfortable anywhere between 3.75 and 7, honestly. I think if, if we put a motion forward of 4% or 3.9, we'll be just fine. But what I'm hearing from a lot of folks is, is that they're not comfortable going lower than probably 5%, 4.94. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think I would be comfortable with the 4.37 because I heard from admin about how confident they feel about being okay. I just also am absolutely happy to go higher, because I do want to remain cognizant of depleting the capital reserves funds and not pushing off too many of these projects. So I am, I think I'm maybe a little bit higher than you, John, but also similar to you.
I'm at 5%.
I like 5. I mean, I just, I really do think that we're, I think that we, I apologize, I think that we're striking a good balance there between being extremely careful and extremely, it's a careful budget, there's not a lot of meat on that budget. And I think that at the same time, we are not simply pushing off costs onto future, future rounds. I mean, we are, truthfully, we are, there are plenty of things we're pushing off, we're just not constantly pushing, we aren't allocating. I think it's, I think it's the right balance, I guess.
I like 5.
I don't like any of them. I have concerns about bits and pieces of all of it. I think one thing that has not really been talked about yet, I'm concerned about cutting positions. And I know that, you know, there's a couple of positions here that are, would be, that would fall within that 4.99%, like the paras and the potential kindergarten teacher at Hanover Street. What happens when a lot of places go open enrollment and people flee and move into Lebanon because they don't want that for their school district, and we need those positions filled? Where does that money come from?
This board would actually have to vote to become an open enrollment school?
No, 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 I mean, people move here, away from districts.
We'd still have to...
If people moved into town?
We don't have, we don't have any housing. Like, there's sort of them to move into.
But they're building, I mean, they're building a ton of houses.
I think it's, I think it's really important to remember when we think about the housing, and this is a fair point, I feel like it comes up a lot. But the reality is, New Hampshire is an incredibly old population. We are actually very lucky in Lebanon to be holding steady in terms of our enrollment.
Increasing.
Very small increases, guys.
But it's actually, we are a very anomaly through the state that I do want to highlight, because some of the state is trying to say that the enrollments in schools are declining, and we need to fund schools less. But for us to see enrollments increasing is...
Yeah, so, but I'm not sure we're talking, we have not yet reached the point where the increases that we're talking about have substantially required us to, to hire new teachers. That is the point, we have not yet reached that point, and we do not have enough housing for people to move into en masse at this point. And truthfully, we're dealing with mostly a very old, an aging, older population. So to some extent, we actually need people to continue moving here, otherwise our enrollments will decline, because we have an aging population. We have done the population studies, they have included the fact that we have new housing coming online. We were off by a bit this past year, and I think we have, we have said we need to keep an eye on that. But overall, the population study... But overall, the population studies are very accurate. So I think we are not facing down major unexpected increases. And if we do start to see them, then we will be able to address them. But I don't think we need to address them now because they aren't happening now.
I will say, Carrie, one thing that I would add is, your question is still, I think, a valid one that we don't know, right? That the predictions, I think, that we've seen for some of the housing in terms of like who they think is going to move in versus who actually does move in, has, there's been a disconnect, there's been a disconnect there. I will say though, that one of the things that we're limited by, one of the things that we're limited by also is, is our capacity of our buildings, right? And our capacity of our, of our classrooms. So there isn't, there is an infinite number of spaces, right? We cannot accommodate infinite number of children without some changes in how we go. Which doesn't mean that we don't need more teachers or we do need more teachers. It just means that we have other limits on what we can and cannot do, just based on physical space as well. But yes, if we do have more people move in, we will have to adapt for that. I think what the, as far as the paras go in this particular, to respond to that part of your question, one of the things that this administration has been really good at is looking at how are we using paras in our schools? And our proportion of paras to, to students, which is very, not very. It is a little bit out of whack and so they're trying to sort of right-size that anyway. So this to me feels like a move towards something they're already trying to do to right-size. So that's why I'm more comfortable with the para part of it in response to that part of the question.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the para piece is kind of, it's not as worrisome as saying, a principal coming to me and saying they need a teacher and we're saying, sorry.
You know, I do have an option too, is that if we had seen a huge increase of students in the Hanover Street area, we could shift an FTE as an interventionist for that one year for, to comply with class sizes rather than taking on a teacher for multiple years.
Joe, John's curious about you.
John's curious. Yeah, I, I like the list of the 4.94. I think it, kind of what we just talked about, it, it addresses items, but it's also probably the most that could be cut before we start to look into actually laying people off and really impacting the students. And so I would support 5 to give room for some of those projects that we had talked about that are part of the cuts that we've kind of talked about as not being things we want as a community to cut.
Thanks. I would say that I am somewhere between the 4.94 and the 4.37. And the reason being that I think that, as we've talked about, there's some sort of movement around that could happen. Not that we're suggesting different cuts, but just reallocation of those, of those cuts. And I, so for me, I would sort of be more, yeah, I'd be looking more at like 4.75 as opposed to 5. Just because I feel like there, I want to be respectful of the fact that these are thorough cuts, which I appreciate. This is a terrible tax time that I also appreciate. And so I kind of want to hit a balance with that or allow this administration to hit a balance with that, this board.
I can live with, I mean, 4.75. I think in my mind, when we were saying 5, I was sort of responding to the, we're calling a 4.94% here, like I was associating that with our 5% number. So I think that like in my mind, those were related numbers. I think the idea that there has, we have talked about already some movement that has happened. I think the idea of, I'm just striking a little bit of a balance there seems fine to me, especially since I'm hearing willingness to be, you know, ongoing willingness to be thoughtful about that, like. But I'm still fine, I would still be fine with a 5%, but.
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we put forward a budget of a 4.5% increase. I think that's $57,231,960. If I have my math correct, Tim.
Say that again slowly.
Yes, could you repeat that?
And you said it's a 4.5%?
It's a 4.5%. Make sure I'm right, Tim, before we ask for a second.
He's working on that. Give him a second.
And while he's doing that, I'll tell you my reasoning. You know, like I said, I'm, I'm very comfortable. I appreciate the, the work the, the administration did. You know, I think we're all comfortable, or most of us anyway, with about a million dollars in our capital reserve fund for building. We have some room. And I feel like we can do many of these things between 0.5 and 5% out of that fund. I would also add that we have an emergency management fund that could be tapped, that has been sitting there for a number of years. And we also have a tech fund that has been sitting there for a number of years.
The tech one is, I think the language there is, which I meanted before, it's for like catastrophic tech events. So like if our IT access points failed, we could fund them.
And if we don't fund technology, that would be catastrophic. And so where those lines end up by the time the March meeting comes around is entirely up to the administration, in my opinion. And so that's my reasoning. I think, I think we will be just fine.
Good job. Does, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Leila, seconds. Additional discussion? Now that you've heard a number, does the administration want to respond in any way?
The only, this is not really a response. The, we need, we would need to huddle one more time to see, not cut by cut, but like if there's reductions in that, to get to that number that are in the budget now, such as the paras, that would have to come out of the default. So I just need to rejigger the default based on discussions after this meeting. So I would bring a new default to you along with the final documents in January.
Nope. I, I appreciate this board and the feedback. Again, I, I want to shout out to my team that's back there, that has spent a lot of time going through this and going through your budgets. It's been a busy week already and I, I can't thank you enough. We've had a busy fall with all sorts of things going on. So I appreciate that and I'm confident that we, as a team, will kind of regroup and look at these to move forward.
And I do, I just want to echo that I said at the beginning, but I want to say it again. I think that this round of budgeting in particular has been in many ways more, as collaborative as, as it's ever been since I've been on the board, which I also really appreciate from the administration, both the building, building leaders and the SAU leadership. So I, again, appreciate that. And I think it's been really, I've actually heard from community members multiple times that they feel like the transparency this time and the communication this time has been so much more thorough, which I also want to, in particular, thank Jack Rooney and Tyler for making so many of these things available to the public. I think they've appreciated that as well. All right. So we have a motion on the table that has been seconded.
Can, can we, can we just like pause for a minor amount of mathing?
Sure.
Great. And any other discussion that anybody wants to have? I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't like it. I think it's too high. I, I think it's too much of a cut. I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to math on, that's a 4.5%. That's 4.5% increase down from a 7.11% proposed increase. I liked the 4.94% number better. To me, in the middle is 4.7. I'm trying to math on that. I'm inclined to vote against a 4.5% increase because I think it's, I think it cuts too many things that, without a plan for how to deal with them.
So let's, we have a motion on the table, so we can either amend.
That is my discussion.
Right. So you can either amend it or, if John agrees, or we can vote and see where we are and then move from there.
Yes. And I, I can math and try to amend, or if people can discuss. We do, we are able to discuss now that there is proposal. If anybody supports this idea, they could say that.
I feel like I have discussed if anyone else would like to discuss.
I think we've all discussed. Everyone will say, there's been a lot. So if, if there, if there, so first, John, if there were an amendment, math, math notwithstanding. So you're saying 4.7 would be your percentage? Is that your?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm making.
Would you be amenable to that, an amendment or no?
I mean, it's really the will of the board. You know, I'm, I know it's my motion. And I'm, and I'm happy to, you know, withdraw that motion if the rest of the board is, is feeling like, you know, that's too low.
I'm okay with just voting and seeing if it passes and then amending it as needed.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think I'm okay with that, with understanding that additional, like, these funds would be tapped to bring it up, basically to recover to that and, and cover the items that are shown here, sort of.
I think the only, the only thing I would throw in there in terms of my preference in a time of difficult discussions is to bring a motion, is to bring a budget to the voters that the board is unanimously or as close to unanimously in supportive as possible. That's my preference. I think that that speaks a lot to the community to know that everybody has really had a chance to discuss this and has really sort of coalesced around something and that the unanimous, board is unanimous. It's hard to know that ahead of time if we don't state that. So I think that would be the only reason to bring forward, to sort of have an understanding before we actually come to a vote and/or to amend a vote.
So the vote that gets put on the warrant article is not the vote for the budget that we're taking right now. So when we do the warrant articles, we are, we vote the night that we have the warrant articles in our hands, which today was just, these are drafts. We vote to recommend this warrant article each and every one. So that vote is the vote that goes on to the warrant article that night. So it is, the board recommends this warrant article by a vote of this many yes and this many no's. It does, it's not this vote right now.
Yes, but if we have this, okay, that.
I'm just, just as for information purposes.
It feels kind of like a formality. I mean, I think this is.
It's a formality, but it is, we've done this in the past where we've had like people who have not necessarily agreed with everyone at the time of the voting, but the, the vote has passed, the budget has passed, and then when we get to the warrant articles, this is how people vote. I mean, it's, you still have the choice to vote however you want, but that's the process that we've gone through before.
Okay. A 4.7% number would be, if my math is correct, 57,341,494. That is up from 57,231,960. So that, if my math is correct. That is the difference that we're talking about. To me, that's a number that is still below the numbers that I would like to see, but it does include a little bit more buffer to look at some of the projects that we have talked extensively about in this and our possible support for them. It would cover those.
I guess just in support of that, I think those projects that we all talked about as being vitally important, I just want to make sure that those are in there and 4.75 or 4.7 makes it seem like that we have the flexibility there. I'd support that.
And if Jessica's math is right and John's math is right, then that is a difference of 109,000 and change, correct? 109,534.
Yeah, the motion right now on the table is 4.5, which I think they either are going to amend the motion or they need to vote.
Just 4.7.
4.7?
I think that's what she said, 4.7.
I'm, I'm suggesting that we amend it to 4, we amend it to 4.7 or that folks.
4.7.
Instead of 4.7.
And I'm saying the difference between those two numbers that they came up with was 109,534. That's what he's been doing. He's trying to do the tax rate. It's going to take a little bit more time to do that, so.
I mean, I think you can look at the sheet that they gave us, which also provides a pretty solid sense of those, of the range there. Because I think the, it would be below, above the 4%, below the 5%.
Oh, right. Right. So, oh, sorry. While Tim is doing that, I did want to point out that the, looking at the chart that Jessica pointed to that gives us the tax rate, one important point of that is that when this budget was presented in these binders, it was assuming a $300,000 retained fund balance. And we had talked at our last meeting about not being comfortable cutting that from a million dollars because that affects the tax rate on the other end. And so this, this particular projected budget is based on a $750,000 retained fund balance, which is a decrease of $250,000 from the million that we normally have done in the past. Not a decrease of $700,000. So just FYI, that was not in this, that's in the new proposal, not in the older proposal. And that affects the tax rate over time, so. Tim.
I'm ready to provide the information you want. First, first, what is the fund balance? I was going to ask that. If, again, this chart is 750. The chart is 7, 5, 4, and 2, which is a little different than the numbers that were presented, which is obviously 4.94, et cetera. It's off by a penny or two, which I can tell you. Are we sold on 750? Going to make a case for something else? So I, it's your budget, we do what you want. I would propose 650 and here's why. The assessed value is 3.5 billion. So what I'm, so $350,000 is a dime. So $1 million is what it has been for historically. If we go by $350,000, it's, it's a dime contribution to the, to, it's a dime higher than it needs to be if we kept it a million. It's a nice, it's just a nice round number. We're making up for the past a dime at a time kind of thing. 750 is less than a dime, that's obviously, but that's what I'm saying. And the reason, the reason why I'm selfish about it is that I need to make sure we have $650,000 left at the end of the year instead of $750,000 left at the end of the year. So it helps me, but it's just a hundred grand.
Will you be able to clarify that more for people?
Yeah.
I understand your language, but I think.
So for many, so you guys say this is the budget and I do that, how much additional taxes it is year over year? That's what the tax increase is. In the, in years past, we have said we're going to have a million dollars left from the year, the previous year. So if you need to raise $35 million, just looking at the numbers, the state lets you raise $34 million, assuming you already have a million dollars left. We're making a new assumption that we're going to have less than a million dollars left, whatever that number is. So obviously, if you go from a million dollars to nothing, you have your tax increase based on the budget, but you also have this other million dollars you have to come up with that, that you're saying you're not going to have left over. So in the middle of that is, we're telling the taxpayers, hey, we're raising the budget more money because we need to do stuff. We have healthcare, everything else. And we're assuming we're going to have less money left to help offset that at the end of the year. And that's going to add an additional amount. So what I'm saying is, is that if you go at 650, you're going to raise the amount of money you just approved tonight plus another dime on your taxes because that's $350,000 less we're going to have left. I hope that's not.
A dime per what?
Per thousand, sorry.
Right. It's not just a dime.
Right.
So it's a dime per thousand.
So here's a perfect example. So if I put in 750 at four, I just have four and a half set up right now. It's $62 per thousand. If I put in 650, it's going to be miniscule. 65 cents. There's three extra cents on your tax bill per thousand. So maybe it doesn't make a difference, but that, I'm trying to show if you left it at a million. So a million is what we had last year. So if I put a million in here, that's just basically assuming we have just as much revenue left this year as we had last year. And this budget you propose is 55 cents. Do you see what I'm saying? Is that just the increased expenditures you talked about now? It's a 55 cent increase per thousand on your taxes. Plus, we're saying we're going to have less revenue. So that number's going to be higher than 55 cents. If you kept it a million, same as last year, it's 55 cents. The danger is if you don't have a million left, you can't fund any cap reserves based on a warrant that I'm going to hope, I want you to think about over Christmas. So that's the target.
Can you give me a true or false? It will be easier to fill up the cap reserves appropriately if it's down at 650 instead of 750?
Correct. And 750 over a million. So I'm not trying to say that's a bad idea. And, and so tonight, we're going to, if you make a motion on the budget, I don't want you to think you're set in stone about what this fund balance thing is. You can change it between now and when we actually set the warrant. But, so I'm just trying to give you a picture of what the impact that the taxpayers would be. It does need to be set by the time you do the public hearing, which is January 14th. So if you come back to me on January 14th and you say, we want it to be this, then that's, then that's what the tax rate impact will be. The number in the warrant doesn't change. The number will be 57 million, whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think, so I'm okay with waiting and thinking about it. That's a good idea. I understand that the difference is in some ways negligible and in some ways significant, right? Because, and, and sort of like threading that needle, I don't know how to thread that needle, and I don't think we have to do it today, and I don't want to do it today. So, but I, I do hear your reasoning, I appreciate that, that's helpful. I think there's also good reasoning for why, sort of, John and I were talking last meeting about 750 or 800 in comparison to what it's been. So I think we can make that decision, I think that's fine, if we can make that decision on the 14th, that will be good.
I'll sign it for 750 tonight for sake of discussion, 750.
And then we can, and if we need to change that, then that's fine, you'll be ready to change it, but I, I don't think we're going to solve that today. But we can solve it, obviously we have to, but not today. Okay, we are still in motion.
Do we, want to, did they give the numbers for the 4.5?
4.7.
4.7 versus 4.5, right?
No.
The numbers for four and a half million, it's 62 cents per thousand.
For which one, sorry?
For four and a half percent.
4.5 is.
At a $400,000 house, it's $247.90.
Say that again?
247 dot 90.
Okay, total.
On a $400,000?
Correct. On a $600,000 house, 371.85, these are annual.
Say, on a $600,000?
Yeah, 371.85.
How can it, oh, I see.
In a million dollar house, it's 619 point 75, point, dot, 75.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
And this is just the school tax?
That's school tax.
This is just the school.
School local tax.
School local tax.
Yeah, okay, and that's for 4.5, correct?
That's for 4.5.
Yeah, okay.
Now, 75.
4.7, you're not listening.
I'm sorry.
4.7. You're not listening because you're doing something else at the same time, that's fine, I understand that. I realized you were doing something else. I just turned to my kid's mom right there.
Well, please.
Holding, please.
It went negative, that's, that's.
No, you did something wrong, fix it. All right.
Just one second.
No, that's fine. Okay, so we're waiting on the numbers. We have a motion at 4.5, we have a counter amendment, we had a second with that, yes. We have a, a potential amendment at 4.7, and we have John, who made the motion, saying that it sort of depends on what the rest of us think, yes, whether he accepts the amendment or not. So while Tim is doing the numbers, I guess that's what we can decide. How do we feel about the amended version of this motion? Or do we not want to make it known until we vote? I mean, it's really, it's not like this is a secret.
I feel supportive of 4.7%.
I know you're supportive.
I'm going to throw, I'm throwing it out there, guys, I'm one.
I am aware, you are supportive. All right, Jessica's supportive.
4.7 is 65 cents per thousand.
65.
260, for 400,000 is 260 dot 39, 260 dot 39.
Okay.
600 is 390 dot 59. And a million is 650 dot 99.
Thank you. Very helpful.
So, looking at the math, once again, kind of trying to honor that, this is still kind of, it's coming in under what the, you know, about 5% goal was. I could be happy with 4.7 or 4.5.
Thank you for that helpful comment. All right, great. I'm just kidding.
I think, I think we should remember that the proposed budget was 7.11.
Yeah.
I want to reiterate that. We didn't, 5% is not something that we were like anchoring on now in a new way. The proposed budget that everybody put together originally was 7.11. So either 4.5 or 4.7 or anything other than 7.11 is a substantial reduction from what our administrators and our school had already looked at and said, that sounds like a good year to us. So I think, I just want to be clear, this isn't, we're down from 7.11, not down from 5.
I also think it's really important to remember that this is a portion of the increase that people are going to see, and we have a lot of people in the community who are struggling. I don't love having to make cuts, I don't love having to push things off. I also want to respect everybody else's personal budgets, so I would be in favor of four and a half.
And I think that's a good point, Carrie, just to reflect, this does not reflect any negotiated phrases for a bargaining unit. Plus, your city tax and state taxes.
All the things. Joe?
Um, I would prefer the 4.7%.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah. I was good with a 5% increase, so anything below that is, I'm, I'm comfortable with, up to that, the ceiling, so.
Yeah. I am, I don't know. I think that I, I think that I am leaning towards the 4.5 because I am looking at the 4.37 sort of scenario and what that would entail, and because of that, I feel more comfortable with it than just a flap, you know, this makes me feel more secure, but I can also be convinced, so.
I'm going to leave it as is, and we can vote.
Okay, so, the motion on, Tia, go ahead, sorry. You had already said.
I just, I agree with what you said, Lil. Yeah. So I didn't really need to add anything.
All right, so, the motion on the floor is for an increase of 4.5%. And it's already been seconded, so, so I guess that's our motion. So all those in favor of a increase, directing the administration to, to make a budget for a 4.5% increase, raise your hands. Okay, all those opposed? Any extensions? No, all right, motion carries, seven to two. All right. Thank you all.
I think, before we move on to the monthly budget report, we're going to look at some.
Sorry, oh, sorry, six to two, sorry, six to two, Richard's not here.
Tim has shared some very draft warrant language. The ones that are stapled are the, the ones that we normally have to put on, you'll see some new language. The extra piece is two other articles that, that we just need to discuss and to see if we are going to pursue Article 8. I don't believe at this point we're ready to do that. We're continuing a lot of rich conversations with our area partners, tending some trainings and getting more information on open enrollment, but I will turn it to Tim to discuss this.
So, the reason why this needs to be talked about now is to really give me some direction as far as timeline, the, the drop dead date that's given in the law for posting a warrant is five days before deliberative session, so the drop dead date is February 20, I mean, January 26th, so we have time. But obviously, I need to write these, I need to get your opinion on stuff, we need to vote on a final warrant article, and typically we do that at the, at the public hearing date, which will be, the, the public hearing on this budget will be on the 14th. And I'd love to have either a final warrant on that date or so clear, so close to final that I can run around and have you guys sign it in time to post it, because you guys do need to sign this warrant. So what I, what this is, is language, just from the, it's based on precedent and the crazy mind of me, it's just a, a point of discussion to, to ask what you want to see on the warrant, and I'll go over these things, and you can ask questions.
Sorry, before, just real quick for number two, I just had a question. Karen, before you leave, and Jack, sorry, as I see you're getting ready to leave, we had had a talk in EC about what was required to put on for ELA proficiency and math proficiency. This is a new RSA that we have to include these percentages, is that what, what we had, we have to include the percentages? And we had talked about whether or not you can include the state percentage. You have to require, you have to include our percentages. Our question was, could we also include the state percentage? Because this is sort of numbers without context.
Yes, my understanding of where that conversation stands at the moment is, we would still like to put the state percentages, and we're waiting for an opinion from legal about whether we can do that. Is that accurate, Tim?
And Karen has already given me, it's not here, but Karen has already given me some language that includes the state percentages. So the one piece I left out is this warrant gets sent to DRA and it gets sent to our attorney. So anything that's on this warrant article, we all have plausible deniability. So we are going to send the language with state stuff to the lawyer and have him weigh in.
I've provided alternate recommended language to Tim and Amy, and they are passing it on to, to Jim for feedback.
Okay, that's good, that was just my question, I know we, I didn't know where we were with that process.
That's where we are with that.
Okay, thank you.
Article one is just, it's going to be about the election of officials that goes on the warrant. Article two has to be the operating budget. So what you're talking about here is what you want on the warrant and the order, but you don't have total control. Operating budget has to be up. And there is a law that says that we have to include our average cost per pupil in our proficiencies, and as Lil just, Lil and Karen just mentioned, we're seeing if we can put some context as far as from what state numbers are, but you will see, on top of the warrant, you will see proficiency standards. Doesn't matter what our opinion is, that's what has to go on there. So then the rest of the wording comes from the, this, the state. It doesn't have to be this, but we always use the, it just makes sense to use their, their language. So I'll fill in the right numbers, you'll see that you have a number that you guys approved tonight, and then the default budget number will be on there as well. You can see that those numbers are just, I just, I wanted to get the language in front of you, and that, don't, so don't focus on the numbers. Article three has, well, it doesn't have to be, but usually we put the collective bargaining agreement on there next, and I'll plug those numbers in. I didn't want to put them out there before you guys had talked, so. And you'll see, and further to reason appropriate, that number will be the first year to FY27 number, but that's what it'll look like. Also, Lil mentioned this earlier, and all these articles, you vote a yes and a no, and I plugged those in there. So that's why I said, school board recommends this article by vote of whatever and whatever. That'll be something we fill out on the 14th. And the, and this is relatively new, in the last few years, the board has wanted an Article Four on there. What that article says is, is if Article Three fails, meaning that the public says, nope, we don't like that, does the school district authorize the governing body, you guys, to hold one special meeting to address Article Three cost items only? If that article is not on there, and article, the previous article goes down and defeat, the answer is no, that's it. Don't have to put Article Four on there. I don't know, a couple, a couple rounds ago, the board started putting that on there, so I left it on there.
Yeah, it has happened during my tenure, it's not, it's been fairly recent, but I think that the thinking was that we, heretofore, there had never been any question about whether these, these CBAs were going to pass, and suddenly there were questions about whether they would pass, and so the question is, if that happens, then what? And so the response was, we can include this, what now is Article Four, that gives us a chance to revisit that, otherwise it's, everything goes back to the way it was. The, the contract reverts to whatever it was before, correct? That's the.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, there, there is no, I think there is, there is no contract.
There is no contract, but the, the levels stay the same as what they were before, and then we, and that's just all it is. So this gives us a chance to do something about that.
And I think you guys know this, but the way this works is that you approve the budget tonight at four and a half. If Article Three passes, that number from 2027 gets added to that budget. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't get, and nobody, the sports staff doesn't get a raise unless Article Four lets you revisit it. I guess I'll just finish going through these. Article Five, again, this is what I did, you can, we, in the past, we flipped these around, but the way these get funded is in order, so you have a fund balance that goes back to the taxpayers, and whatever's on the warrant first gets funded first. So, Article Five, I have the putting money into the construction renovations fund. The way I wrote, wrote this, and again, this is just for your discussion, we did, we did this, I think, two years ago. Raise $600,000, $400,000 comes from any money that's left, $200,000 gets added to the budget. The board has gone back and forth, I didn't, I'm not making a statement on what you should do, but there, it is possible to only fund it out of any remaining funds, or it's possible to fund it by adding money to the budget, and that's what I showed here. I can change it, and that's just kind of, this is the kind of stuff I do need you to kind of think about tonight and give me some guidance, on whether we want just funding from remaining funds, or if you want money coming forced into the budget to do it. It would increase the budget by $200,000.
Last year, we did, I think we funded only from.
Yeah, I think it was two years ago we did this.
Two years ago, we, we had actual money that we had put in the budget that was at, like, raised from taxation to replenish the capital reserve fund, I think it was $200,000.
Right, it was these numbers.
And then last year, we.
We did not.
What was it, six, what was it, was it 600 or 400 that we wound up putting in from the retained fund balance?
Last year?
Yeah.
450.
450.
No, I'm sorry, 400 and 250 to the special.
So, so we had said, no amount to be raised from taxation, 400 goes in. Okay. And there's, but there's no, and there's no numbers right now in the budget.
Correct. This would add money into the budget that we, that you just approved. If you don't want to do it that way, then I will remove the part about money coming from taxation. I also need to know if you want 600, a million, 200, whatever.
Right.
And then the last one is special ed, this is two, this is standard, we've usually done special ed, we don't have to, 250, it would be the last one, it would fund it last if there's any money left. So what is, does the board have any sort of preference in either of them?
You mean in the order of them?
The order of them, or the dollar amount? And again, there's time to change it, but I'd like to get something going.
Well, we're not, I mean, we're not going to add any money from the, from, raised from taxation for the capital reserve fund. I mean, we don't have, there's nothing in the budget that we just approved, so there's not going to be any money raised from taxation. I'd say the question then becomes, do we ask to put in some, if, if we have retained fund balance, do we contribute that?
I'm saying you can add money, but from taxation with this language, the way it is right now.
And I, not.
Right, she's saying no.
No.
I, I think, well, no, maybe I've misunderstood then. I guess I thought I had asked that question, and then it, I got a different answer from Lil than I think you just gave, so.
The budget that was approved does not have money in it, but you can make the money go in by taxation with this language if you want, so it's an addition, it's just like the CBA adds money more.
Correct. I'm, I, yes, okay, so that was actually what I, that's different. I'm not hearing any wiggle room from the board in terms of that, so I don't think anybody here is going to suggest that. So I think we can pretty preemptively nix that as a thing that's going to happen. I think we should do it, we're clearly not going to do it. I definitely think that we should put in the provision saying, if we have a retained fund balance, some of that money goes, we do try to send some of that money into the capital reserve fund. That is how we have gotten to the amount of money that we have in the capital reserve fund, that is a very important mechanism for making sure that we have money set aside just to take care of the major expenses that do come down the pike and not having to do it in the general fund. So that's a very important thing to do, I think the question is, how much do we do it for?
I think it's a, kind of an important conversation, I mean, the district's kind of always done it this way, but the other option is to, you know, put CIP type things as a warrant, article kind of around this funding mechanism, and it's just kind of a different piggy bank, if you will, and then it's out of the regular budget, and you're asking the voters each year to, to say yes to that or not. There are many districts that do that in the state. It's really kind of the will of the board. This is just the way we've always done it.
Can you give an example of what that might look like?
So you take all your capital reserve projects, or whatever, whatever they are for the upcoming year, and you create a warrant article that is raised by taxation, right? It's a separate warrant article from your operating budget, so your. So your operating budget is not as high as, as the one we put forward this year, right? And the public votes on whether or not you do those things.
Is it raised by taxation or is it raised?
It is raised by taxation typically.
It's not actually a different, it doesn't change the amount of money that you're taxing people. It just says, it just gives, it just changes how people vote on it.
Like two different voting.
It's actually, it's very different because you're putting that money into a capital reserve fund that you're using for those CIP projects and that money rolls over and stays with you versus your operating budget goes back every year.
Fair. I think that's, that's a fair distinction. But I think the point in terms of taxation, the point being that that's only true if you don't spend, like if you don't spend the money on those projects from your general fund, then you lose it. But if you, but it's not like, and I think that that's a fair point, that when you put money into a capital reserve fund, you can accumulate it over time, which is why we have a capital reserve fund, so that you can sort of continue to put money into it. You can't do that with your general fund. But I think the point is that if you just take like things that everybody agrees need to be done in a given year and you take them out of your general fund and you create them as a separate warrant article, which is totally possible. I get that you can do it. You haven't reduced the amount of anything's going to cost. You've just given, you've just given voters a chance to explicitly say no to capital projects. So I think that that's a difference. Like whereas if you say, and that's, but I think that's if you propose, if you put it in with the specifics of the projects. Whereas what we've done up until now is we've just put a dollar amount and said, okay, this is the amount of money that we're going to put into the capital reserve fund. It may or may not be used in this year, or it could be used in future years. So we haven't specified the projects. We've just said, we're putting money back in the piggy bank.
Not to get too much in the weeds, but I think it's relevant. You could write a warrant article that says, should the district replace the windows at the high school for a cost of $154,000 to raise from taxation and then they can say no and the windows don't get done. What you're kind of suggesting is that we might have a dollar amount associated with capital reserve projects, but we put it in a fund instead of to a specific project. Voters can still vote no.
Prefer the way it is and we retain excess funds and put it in the capital reserve fund rather than ask later.
Are you happy with 600? At the reason, we've really done between four and eight, so it's typically what we do.
I mean, with 1.4, six makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, you could go a little bit less if you want to.
Do we, don't we have to clarify where, what order?
It's based on how it's on the warrant. So if we do six, if we do the construction renovations before the special ed.
So that gets funded first.
That gets funded first.
So what, how much money is in the special ed?
One point eight million.
One point, and how, do we have a target that we usually try to make for that?
I said earlier, I had one and a half in my mind, but we don't have a target. I think 1.8 is a pretty good number.
Yeah, but we do anticipate probably having to dip into the special ed fund this year.
Probably, based on our next report, we might want to.
Okay. I, I think, I mean, is the?
I think that the construction fund is lower than, I'm more uncomfortable with the level of the construction fund than I am with the special ed.
We spent a bunch of money out of it last year. Basically what happened in the budget last year was we had a bunch of capital improvement projects in the general budget. They got pushed into taking money from the capital reserve fund instead. And so that's part of the reason why it's down to where it is now.
And where is it right now? Sorry, tell me, it's 1.4?
It's 1.9, but after we get public hearing we had tonight, it's going to be 1.4.
1.4, yeah, that's what I meant. Okay. Okay.
And then the last one is special ed and we can take this off. I think what's the harm in having on there frankly? If there's money enough, we'll also use it.
Yeah, agreed.
And then the only harm I guess is that remember our contingency, so you also have the 2.5% contingency fund that we can withhold before you send money back to taxpayers. Well, maybe the word before is the wrong word. So remember that we don't have hardly any money left in that because of healthcare now, so. So if you didn't have the special ed thing on there, the $250,000 that could go to that, or we can?
And what are the restrictions on that one again?
Not a lot. When we first passed it, had to get the board of education approved. Now we're in mode number two and with you guys having a public hearing, you basically can spend it, which is what we did.
It's the least restrictive of all of them, right?
I guess, yeah, I mean, like part of me feels like that one ought to be bumped actually up the pike then.
There's nothing to fund, you don't put a warrant for it.
Yeah, you don't have to make a warrant for that.
Oh, we don't have to make a warrant?
No, so he was suggesting that we?
If you take this one off, then that's 250,000. So it'll, it'll get funded after these get funded is the point. So if the second, if the special ed one's not on there, that's $250,000 that can go to the contingency fund. Which you can use for special ed.
Right, yeah. So what you're suggesting, I mean, I don't know if you're advocating for this, but what you're suggesting is not having article six. Take off article six and that would give us, whatever that is, extra, in theory, $250,000 that is left. If there is that $250,000 left after all the rest of these other things have been funded, that $250,000 can go into this 2-point cent contingency fund, 2-point whatever percent contingency fund, which is, has fewer strings than anything else and can be used for special ed, but can also be used for other things.
I didn't think of that till just now, so I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Thank you, Jessica.
I like the idea of, I think, it sounds to me like the, that's, I would rather do that. I think that, I guess, my only other question though would be that, I'm sure you're going to talk about article seven. In terms of the order of, order of funding, were we to include article seven, which I get, we haven't done before, it's new, we don't know if we would do it. I wouldn't want to try to raise money from taxation to fund a healthcare capital reserve fund. I would want that to be from some retain, the retained fund balance. And so I think that for me, that would actually, I guess, I would take a smaller amount going into the the healthcare capital reserve fund because I actually see that as a longer term planning mechanism. Like to me, we're creating it this year and it's more important to get it created and like put some money into it, but mostly just as a way of getting it started. I would probably prioritize, in terms of order, the capital reserve fund. I'd probably then do the creation of the healthcare reserve fund with a little, just maybe $50,000, $75,000 something. Just something to get it started and get some money in there. And then I would put the, do the last, take out the special. That would probably be how I'd do it. Does that, how do you, I would, but I would take thoughts on that.
So you kind of jumped ahead. So do we, I'm advocating that we start a healthcare reserve, cap reserve fund, but it's your decision. And we can remove this. We can, if you like the idea, we can change what I wrote as far as funding and fund it from unreserved fund balance, which is just like the?
That's always one, is there any difference if, whether to create a fund or just fund that other unreserved fund?
I, you know, I would have to ask Jim if we can create a fund and not put any money into it except from excess. I don't know the answer to that. I've only created one fund and it was a computer fund.
Right, but I didn't, do we even need to create this fund if that money is going to go into that other account that could be used?
The contingency fund? That's another option, is you don't create it at all.
Yes, I think, and I think that this is a, this is a, it's always an interesting question. Like are you better off having, I mean, we could have no reserve funds. We could just never put money into piggy banks. I think that there's pretty good evidence from the way that humans' brains work from behavioral economics that humans function a lot better when you have piggy banks. And when you have a place where you put money and you don't take it out except for specific purposes. And I think that the idea of, I like having the emergency, the bigger, the more, sorry, I just?
Contingency.
The contingency fund, I think is great. We do need that. But I think that with what we're seeing with healthcare and it's going to keep going, I think that it would be very wise for us to start to have a piggy bank for healthcare cost overruns.
Let me, I would say this, and I'm learning this as we go along with these contingency funds. But in the eyes of the state on June 30th, you have money left from our operating budget that we talked about, unassigned fund balance, and we have this contingency fund. In the eyes of the DRA, it's one big pot of money at the end of the year. So they will fund, so your contingency fund can theoretically decrease. Say we had a million dollars set aside as we did this year. But you have these things that are funded from the warrant article. They're going to fund those things in a warrant article, even if it taps into that contingency fund, because in the eyes of the state, it's one big pot of money. So theoretically, your contingency fund could shrink. It's not happened in my experience, but it could, so that's the danger of having just a contingency fund is it's not protected.
And the contingency fund, does it roll over or does it go?
It does roll over.
It does roll over?
Yeah, well, yes.
I mean?
For all intents and purposes, roll over. If you ask Jamie dial that, she'll tell you, nope, it starts again new every year, but it rolls over.
Okay, that was my other question. It's like, it doesn't, it's not like disappears at the end.
Can these contingency funds have a separate line item for specific things? So?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a retained fund balance for use as the board says. It can't be used unless you guys say what you're going to use it for and have a public hearing.
We have to tap them.
Right, but if we had a contingency fund and we had a little branch off of that contingency fund for healthcare?
That would, to me, that's a cap reserve fund. This is what we're talking about. Correct.
I just don't know, I don't love the idea of presenting to the public of we're looking to open up another savings account of piggy banks. So that's why I'm wondering, I'm all for setting aside monies for insurance. I think it's important. I don't love the thought of opening up another account and asking to put money in it.
I mean, that's, those are how you do it.
But that's, but that's, I mean, that's her, so let's hear everybody's opinion before we go back.
I'm wondering if, I'm sorry, Kevin. I'm wondering if, you know, we actually asked the voters to move some of the money in the tech capital reserve that already exists and it's been sitting there for years into a new healthcare capital reserve. And I would also advocate for, you know, if that money just sits in the healthcare reserve and is not touched for five years, that it, you know, gets moved to the building capital reserve or something like that. Because sometimes you create these funds and then money just sits in them and you can't get it out. And that would solve, kind of raising the money, that would solve worrying about whether or not it comes, you know, at the end of the year. And we'd still have the ability to create it.
Kevin, sorry, Kevin was going to, hold on, Kevin was going to say?
I think it's possible. I mean, so I think your argument is the reason I'd sort of be against it. If I'm understanding correctly, which is not guaranteed, it's sort of late. But I don't like creating all these small pots of money with rules on them that then we have to move the pot to this other pot and all these kind of things. I'd rather have just a big pot. So my argument would be for a general, the general contingency fund for these specific purposes.
Leila?
I am, I'm trying to share. I am in favor of having something designated as healthcare capital reserve fund because I think we're in a time where it is the drive, a major driving cost of the district. I really like John's idea of kind of respecting and honoring the needs of our constituency by just trying to shift the tech money at this time, to shift the tech fund into the healthcare capital reserve fund. I kind of support the goal of getting this overall created because we're probably going to need it.
Go ahead.
You look like you're, you want my opinion.
I was coming to you next.
Yeah, I do think we need to have plans for that, but I do, what, my thing with the tech program, I guess, or the tech fund, my question is, we are talking about with the budget we just passed, potentially needing to tap into that. So I like, and I also sit with Carrie of asking for a savings account feels a little iffy right now with a lot of taxpayers. And I agree with Kevin's point of just having a contingency fund that we could use for healthcare, for IT, for whatever we need. We would have that for whatever. And so I do kind of like the no strings attached, but we have it for whatever catastrophic thing pops up.
Can I, what if, I don't know what dollar amount you're thinking because we were also talking about keeping the tech fund in reserve, but you know, the emergency management fund, which was opened up before I got here, got $56,000 in it. I wonder if that is, it's not a lot of money, but it's a nugget. And I think it was set up when we were trying to do electronic door locks and radios and stuff and with grants coming from the safety department. Like I, I don't know if we'll ever tap that money.
Yeah.
No, no, that's totally fine. I mean, I'm all, I also kind of agree with Tia and others. I mean, the contingency exists for a reason. And so, you know, I'm not absolute that we need this fund. But if we're going to do it, I think the emergency or the tech would work.
So, sorry, so I think we have kind of two questions happening here at the same time, right? The first question is, do we want to do this at all? Have a healthcare capital reserve fund, period? If we do, do we, how do we want to fund it? And so far, the thing that seems sort of the, to go along with what most people have said is to do one of these transfers, is to transfer something from one of these funds. I do like the, me personally, I like the emergency management fund transfer because that has been there for years and years and years and has strings that are not necessarily all that helpful. And is going to, it's like a, it's funding the healthcare trust, but not, it's giving us the flexibility to figure out what we're doing with that, which I think is important. And it's funding it, it's creating it, but it's not saying, hey, we need another, we need you to give us another thing. It's just, we're going to reallocate things.
Can we, can we do that?
That's the question he's going to have to?
You have to write a warrant article that says, do the voters approve moving, changing the purpose of the fund?
Right.
Yes, it can be done and they can say no. And if they say no, then nothing changes.
Right.
I mean, this would be a good opportunity, given sort of the emphasis on this, to move dead fund to something that we will use.
Yeah.
I do agree with that, reallocating funds that aren't being used. But if we don't have stuff that isn't, then I don't necessarily want to ask for more right now either.
Would it, would it be, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, Tim. The warrant would, we would be able to like rewrite article seven, basically to clarify that we are closing?
We're asking a transfer, basically?
There's actually a, on the drop down portal, there's a changed purpose of the cap reserve fund sort of option. So I'll click that option and see what the template language is and that's what you'll see.
Okay, so it would still be, I guess my question was like, it would still be one article. We wouldn't have to do like multiple articles to accomplish that. We could accomplish that in one move.
Yes.
Okay, if we could accomplish that in one move, I feel totally fine.
Say all that with the contingency that Jim O'Shaughnessy has?
Sure, sure. I mean, this has passed DRI and Jim, so who knows, right? But that's a, that's another question. We can't solve that question. Okay, so?
Anyway, I appreciate the guidance. I have some clear guidance. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, do you feel like you know what you need to do now?
I do.
Okay, great.
And I don't know what to do with the open enrollment.
I don't know what to do with the open enrollment either.
We will have guidance, I think, by the 14th.
Yes.
Of a direction where I think we need to go once we get more clarification.
So we consulted with some lawyers. We consulted with our Upper Valley partners. We are waiting to see on some other districts that have meetings earlier than we do, deliberative sessions earlier than we do, to look at their language for the warrant articles that they're proposing or not.
There's like one close potential district that could be considering, which potentially could have a domino effect. So it's sort of, we're waiting and watching.
So we're waiting and watching. We, I think the, just as, so the board is aware of where I stand on this personally, I would like to wait and watch until it's absolutely necessary to decide because the hidden, there's two reasons. One, this may become moot because if the city, if the state decides to open an all schools or open enrollment, we don't need to decide. It's decided for us, right, in this legislative session. But two, if we do have to declare ourselves quote unquote, an open enrollment district, this has the unanticipated effect, or I think it's, it has the unwanted effect from our perspective and maybe the wanted perspective from other people, that then everyone who has declared themselves an open enrollment district, the state can say, but look at all these schools that want to be open enrollment districts. And I want us to be careful not to do that unless we absolutely have to. Because there's a lot of administrative problems and funding problems that come along with that that are really difficult for the SAU staff to handle and manage and almost impossible to predict and have budgetary concerns that are very, very, very complex. And so I think we want to just wait until we, the last possible minute.
And I think one of the things that we recently learned coming out is that it could have a negative pack, a negative impact on our current tuition agreements. So we would be potentially receiving less money and revenue and tuition. That would be bad. So I think, like you said, I think I'm not one to wait till the last minute, but I think it's the best case scenario.
And we are working very, very closely with our tuition agreement groups as well. So with Plainfield and Cornish and Grant them, those big ones, we are talking to them all the time about this as well because they? it will affect them poorly as, if it has to happen. So we're going to wait and see. Um, so I have nothing to say to you, Tim, about that, except that we keep waiting and we'll see.
I will work on Articles one through seven and we'll play by year in Article eight.
Great. All right, you are on to your next financial report.
So this is through, we did like halfway through November at the Thanksgiving meeting. This is through November. It's pretty much the same picture. Um, we are ninety-two point one five percent expended through November. Just trying to be cautious. We're cutting off, uh, purchase orders in January, end of January instead of April break. We are nine hundred and forty thousand dollars more spent or encumbered than last year and four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars more than two years ago. And, uh, doesn't mean we don't have money. It just means that we, we're further along the train. So it's something to be aware of. And as I tried to say in that second paragraph, or whatever paragraph you want to call it, um, it, it'll probably, I don't see how it doesn't. It'll affect year-end spending. And that's why the talk about how much money we have left, have left at the end of the year is important to me. I have noticed that we have some special ed expenditures, especially tuition, that are higher than budgeted. So if, um, I'm just watching it. We may have to have a public hearing to take some money out of the special ed fund we just talked about to cover those costs. As far as things going forward, I mean, you, you know about the asbestos incident, so, um, you know, I'm always worried about unanticipated expenditures, but just have to roll with it and get an ulcer and get over it. So, any questions about that?
Okay, great. Um, new business. Uh, so we did the public hearing for this already. We need, um, we have discussion and action approval to withdraw four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars from the capital reserve fund for buildings and renovations for projects previously approved by the board.
I want a motion.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we withdraw four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars from the capital reserve fund for buildings and renovations for projects previously approved by the board.
A motion by John, second by Joe. Any questions additional? We've already discussed this. All right. Um, all those in favor? Unanimous? Excellent. Uh, discussion, we'd like to acknowledge the donation of thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and five cents from Fujifilm Dymatics, I already said that wrong, Dymatics, Inc. Um, and this is for?
This is for, um, school lunch balances.
Oh, perfect. All right. Well, we are very grateful to Fujifilm for their donation. That is, um, very much appreciated and we're grateful for their continued support of the district through our externship program as well. Um, and furthermore, discussion acknowledgement of donation of two hundred and fifty, two hu- twenty-five, sorry, start again. Den- acknowledgement of donation for twenty-five hundred dollars from Fujifilm, uh, Dymatics also, and this goes to the LMS PTO?
Um, nope, it's just in conjunction.
In conjunction.
It was, um, done through employee match donation. So the PTO is our acceptor and they're donating back to the district for more for, uh, school lunch balances.
Oh, great. That's excellent. That is a big, uh, donation for school lunch balances. So we very much appreciate that. All right, uh, discussion and action approval of an overnight field trip for the girls' ice, LHS girls' ice hockey team.
Sure. So, um, this is a trip that's leaving out on January thirty-first through February first, going to, uh, Beakman Town, New York to, um, some elevated competition, team bonding and, um, some great ice hockey. So I had let the coach know who, um, they were going to have a scrimmage tonight, but it was canceled, but he didn't need to be there. This trip has been approved in the past.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the girls' ice hockey request for overnight with no air travel on January thirty-first.
Okay, motion by John, second by Joe. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous? Excellent. All right, uh, then we would like to acknowledge a donation of five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars from Hanaford Cares to Lebanon Middle School. Excellent. And, and assuming that's from shoppers.
Yes.
Okay, great. We appreciate that. We appreciate everyone who shops at Hanaford as well, um, and for their generous donation to the middle school. And in addition, we'd like to acknowledge their donation of five hundred and thirteen dollars from Hanaford Helps to Hanover Street School as well. Um, so we really appreciate all of that from the shoppers and from the Hanover, um, for the Hanaford, um, Helps. Sorry, it's Hanaford Helps and Hanaford Cares. There's two different programs.
The check was written just that way, so I double checked myself and.
Two different programs that help our schools. We appreciate that. And then finally, uh, we'd like to acknowledge the donation of fifteen thousand dollars from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for the Take Flight Curriculum. Um, as you all know, uh, most of this, um, uh, the program itself is funded by the sale of the plane and donations. However, the curriculum is an ongoing, um, expense every year and, uh, we are very grateful to them for, uh, donating this, uh, to continue the Take Flight program for another year. So we're grateful to them for that.
Then my added item was a, an additional last minute donation for five hundred dollars for girls' basketball uniforms for the Lebanon Middle School from GIACon.
Okay, so we'd like to thank GIACon for their five hundred dollars, um, for the, um, middle school basketball uniforms. We want to thank all of our donors today. This has been great. We always appreciate our, um, community, uh, partners and are grateful for them to can support our mission here at the Lebanon School District. All right, that brings us to our policies. Um, we have a first reading for, uh, policies A one through nine. Does anybody have anything from those policies that they would like to ask any questions about?
I was curious on the physical education credit. Um, it was an opt-in policy and I didn't know if that was problematic. And I was curious as to kind of why we felt we needed it to be opt-in.
Um, I H E, uh, sorry, I H A E, is that the one that you're?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's actually the dash R.
Dash R, mhm.
Yes, it's the dash R. It's an opt-in opportunity. I just wasn't sure why.
I think that was a language because they would have to fill out the, the form that they're going to apply for the credit and do the goals and sign off.
It seemed like more work to me. Like it seemed like they could just take the rosters and check with the coaches and see if they were there and then put the credit on their transcripts, but I mean, if they want to go through this process.
Yeah, this is the process that the high school came up with. Um, this is the like third version of this process. It's gotten easier with each pro- version, but it's still, um, they were, they are very clear on the fact that they want the students to take ownership of, um, filling out this paperwork and doing this work and, uh, getting the credit, like applying for the credit, I guess, is the question. So that is their rationale.
Thank you.
Any other questions about these policies? Um, okay, in the absence of the chair of policy, um, I will make a motion. Look at this. Um, I'll make a motion, uh, to move policies under A one through nine to the, January fourteenth? January fourteenth meeting for second reading.
I'll second.
Okay, um, any additional questions on these policies? All right, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, Leila, you had a question?
I know it's late. I'm really sorry. Uh, yeah, so the school community booster policies.
KJ.
KJ, yes.
So are, how are these reflected to what it was before to what?
We didn't have a booster policy. We had the PTO. So, um, what we did with the PTO group, we separated the PTOs from the boosters because they're, they operate differently. Um, and, uh, Ash had drafted, um, a proposal for the boosters. I met with the boosters for feedback and they all agreed and gave the nod for this.
Okay, great. I am ready to vote.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of moving these on to the second reading? Okay, unanimous? Great. All right, um, we're going to return to public comment. Uh, there is no public comment in the room. Is there any online?
If you are online and wish to speak, please raise your hand. There is no public comment online.
Okay, so we'll close public comment again. All right, committee updates. Uh, FNF, the next meeting is TBD. Um, policy committee met on December eighth. You see the results of that already. The next meeting is January twelfth at eight fifteen. Um, EC met on November thirteenth. We already talked about that. Our next meeting is, I'm sorry? Yeah, our next meeting is scheduled, uh, for tomorrow, actually. Um, and that's not, it's at ten AM, not twelve PM. Um, PNN met on November nineteenth and on note, December fourth. Um, uh, student wellness advisory committee met on December fourth. Do we have anything? Nothing? Okay. The next meeting is scheduled for February twelfth, twenty twenty-six. HACTCC met on November twelfth. The next meeting is scheduled for March eighteenth at twelve PM at HACTCC. Area committee, the next meeting is scheduled for February seventeenth at six PM at the LMS Cafe. School District and City Task Force, um, actually met last night. Uh, just as a quick update on that, um, we talked, we listened to a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club about the possibility of building a early childcare center on the field that is next to the S.A.U. where we normally park our overflow parking. Um, and the possibility of, uh, trading the land that our shed sits on at the back of the district that is the, um, owned by the city. The shed is ours. The city owns the land. Trading that land for, and another parcel of land that's sort of adjacent to the road that would be an access road into this proposed, um, childcare center, trading those things are a half acre total for the half acre on which the Dana House sits on the other side of the S.A.U. that we own. Um, so we talked about that. We talked about, um, the possibilities of, uh, this childcare center. There's a, they, there's a lot of details to work out. Whether or not they would own the building and we would, they would lease the land or we would, uh, there's a lot of discussion about that. So that's in the very preliminary stages. So just so you know, that's where that's going, but we're meeting more frequently with them to talk through all of these things, um, in more detail. So we should have more updates.
Um, and we also did a tour for, um, two city services, uh, tech, sorry, cybersecurity and, uh, the rec department for potential rental spaces, our fire department, so.
In the S.A.U. building.
Yes. Um, the cybersecurity has a longer term existing lease, so they would need to do that. And I think rec department is still what kind of space, so conversations about.
Mhm. Um, and then the housing task force met on November seventeenth. The next meeting is scheduled for also, let's see, next week, for December fifteenth? Is that right? At eight fifteen AM? Yes. Okay, great. Um, future agenda items, just one quick note. Um, on Friday, so there's been, I think I mentioned this to you all before, at one point, there's been a meeting put together over the last couple of months between the school board chairs all across the, um, state. And a contingent of those school board chairs is going to meet with the commissioner of education on Friday to talk to her about, um, local control, open enrollment and special education funding, those, just those three issues. Not in some terms of like, hey, give us more funding, but also like what, uh, this is our perspective from people on the ground who are dealing with these issues. Um, and how can we partner with you to be able to get our voice, uh, heard more in the discussions with the legislature? Um, I'm, I'm part of that, uh, committee, uh, the contingent that's going on Friday. So I just wanted to let you know that that is where I'm going on Friday and I am representing the Lebanon School Board, talking about those three issues. I'm actually not talking about anything. I'm taking notes. Um, but I, we, we all might talk, but we have people assigned to do things that we're not overwhelming her. So, um, it's a really great thing. There's going to be, I think, twelve or thirteen of us that are going and they're from all over the state, all different sizes of districts and things. So I think it's a really, um, good opportunity for her to just put some, um, real people on the ground faces to the issues that she's been dealing with. So just FYI. Uh, any other future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions? Okay, um, we, our next school to board meeting is scheduled for December ninth. No, that's not true. We are not having that meeting. So yay, good for you. Um, good work, everyone. Uh, the next meeting is going to be January fourteenth at twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-six at six thirty PM here at the, um, LMS, and that will be the public hearing on the budget that we discussed earlier. Uh, we do need to have a brief, well, we need to have a non-public session. And, um, when we return from the non-public session, we will have one item of business that we have to ratify or not. So, um, just for the watching crowd at home, I just want to let you know what we're doing. Uh, and we need a roll call vote to go into non-public. So, uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Oh, no, we need a motion, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we enter non-public session under N, NHRS A ninety-one, A three, two, A.
I can second that.
Okay, the motion by John. Who was the second? I'm sorry. Kevin seconds? Okay. Uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Okay, so we will go into non-public at eight fifty-six. So I'd like to call the meeting back to order at, um, nine o'clock PM. Uh, we have our one last item of business is the ratification of the negotiated agreement with the LSS union. And so we need a formal motion, a public motion to, uh, ratify that agreement. Thank you. Um, so.
I'm going to make a motion that we ratify the LSS agreement that we discussed in non-public.
Okay, uh, we need a second?
Second.
Joe? All right, so motion by John, second by Joe. Um, this doesn't have to be roll call, does it? this doesn't have to be roll call, does it? It does? Okay, also has to be roll call. All right, Kevin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Okay, so unanimous. Um, and then if there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion to adjourn by John. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, meeting is adjourned at nine oh one.